Call the council meeting to order, please be seated. Right, a motion to reconvene the open council meeting? All those in favor, opposed and carried. A motion to adopt the minutes of the open council meeting held on April the 24th, 2017. Been moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Motion to adopt the minutes of the public hearing zoning held on April the 25th, 2017. Seconded, please. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed and carried. Now, it's springtime and proclamations are growing like daffodils out of the city soil. So we are going to proceed with the first proclamation, and this is going to be read by Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, your worship. This is regarding B.C. Children's Hospital Genes Day. Whereas caring for children with acute health problems is a special concern at British Columbia's Children's Hospital, and whereas many of our programs and sophisticated facilities at British Columbia's Children's Hospital to diagnose, treat and study children with a variety of disorders including cancer, heart, kidney, metabolic, neurological and psychiatric problems would not be possible without the support of B.C. residents. And whereas B.C. Children's Hospital was undertaken an annual B.C. Children's Hospital Miracle Weekend to promote public awareness of the hospital and to increase support from the community. And whereas 2017 marks the 27th anniversary of Genes Day, as well as the 30th anniversary of B.C. Children's Hospital Miracle Weekend. And whereas every cent raised goes to the Excellence in Child Health Fund to purchase vital equipment and support clinical care, research and development, and staff and family education programs. A British Columbia-wide Genes Day will be held May 4th in support of Miracle Weekend. Now, therefore, yourself, Mayor Derek Corrigan, does hereby proclaim May 4th, 2017, as B.C. Children's Hospital Genes Day in the City of Burnaby.
Great, thank you very much, Counselor Johnson. The next proclamation is going to be read by Counselor Jordan.
Thank you, your worship. From the office of the mayor of the City of Burnaby, a proclamation, Burnaby Youth Week. Whereas May 1st to May 7th, 2017, has been designated as Burnaby Youth Week, and whereas the youth in Burnaby will be celebrated with numerous events and displays throughout the city, and whereas the community will be invited to participate in events that will celebrate all youth but will focus on those aged 11 to 18 years. And whereas Burnaby Youth Week will provide the structure for agencies and organizations to plan entertaining and challenging events for youth and other members of the community. And whereas through these planned events, the community will develop a greater understanding and acceptance of youth. And whereas youth awareness, support and involvement are essential in preventing youth crime, violence and the victimization of youth in our community. Now, therefore, Derek R. Corrigan, the mayor of Burnaby, does hereby proclaim May 1st to 7th, 2017, as Burnaby Youth Week.
Thank you, Counselor Jordan. Counselor King, proclamation.
Thank you, your worship. From the office of the mayor of the City of Burnaby, proclamation, Childcare Month and Childcare Provider Appreciation Day. Whereas childcare is a vital community service that supports healthy families and healthy economy. And whereas quality early childcare and learning programs contribute to children's healthy development and readiness to learn. And whereas childcare providers promote the health and wellbeing of children and are essential to providing quality, safe childcare. And whereas childcare providers face significant challenges in meeting the demand for quality childcare, highlighting the need for coordinated and comprehensive provincial and federal childcare plans, which are based on the principles of quality, universality, affordability, accessibility and developmental appropriateness. And whereas many individuals, organizations and municipalities throughout British Columbia have since 1982 recognized May as Childcare Month and organized events during the month to highlight the role quality childcare plays in communities. Now, therefore, Derek R. Corrigan, mayor of Burnaby, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2017 as Childcare Month and May 21st, 2017, as Childcare Provider Appreciation Day in City of Burnaby. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor King. Counselor Dollywell.
Thank you, your worship. From the office of the mayor of the City of Burnaby, proclamation, Emergency Preparedness Week. Whereas the City of Burnaby recognizes the importance of emergency preparedness in British Columbia. And whereas unforeseen events such as earthquakes, landslides, oil spills, wildfires, disease outbreaks or cyber attacks can occur quickly and without warning. And understanding these risks help each one of us to be better prepared. And whereas emergency preparedness is a responsibility shared by all individuals, businesses and levels of government and to make our community more resilient to emergencies and disasters. We must prepare ourselves. And whereas the City of Burnaby, on behalf of all citizens, recognizes all involved in emergency preparedness, emergency response and disaster recovery, which include public works, fire, police, ambulance, schools, non-governmental organization, hospital, health organizations, civic groups, local media and volunteers. And whereas Emergency Preparedness Week is declared annually to increase public awareness of how everyone can improve their personal preparedness to better cope with emergency and disasters. Now, therefore, Derek Corrigan, mayor of Burnaby, does hereby proclaim May 7th to 13th, 2017, as Emergency Preparedness Week in the City of Burnaby to recognize and encourage all citizens and businesses to take the lead in making our city and community resilient to emergencies and disasters by recognizing the importance of planning and preparing for emergency situations and making the appropriate preparedness actions. Signed, Derek R. Corrigan, mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Dollywell. Counselor McDeNell.
From the office of the mayor of the City of Burnaby, proclamation, Global Love Day. Whereas the Love Foundation, Inc., a nonprofit organization, has announced Global Love Day to facilitate establishing love and peace in our planet. And whereas Global Love Day will establish a worldwide focus towards unconditionally loving each other as we love ourselves. And whereas we are one humanity on this planet. And whereas all life is interconnected and interdependent. And whereas all share the universal bond of love. And whereas love begins with self-acceptance and forgiveness. And whereas respect and compassion, we embrace diversity. And whereas together we make a difference through love. Whereas the Love Foundation, Inc., invites mankind to declare May 1st, 2017, as Global Love Day, a day of forgiveness and unconditional love. Global Love Day will act as a model for all of us to follow each and every day. Now, therefore, Derek R. Corrigan, mayor of Burnaby, do hereby proclaim May 1st as Global Love Day in the City of Burnaby, invites all citizens to observe this day, which honors the public cause for global love, world peace and universal joy. Signed by Derek R. Corrigan.
Thank you, Counselor McDeNell. Counselor Valco.
Thank you, your worship. This should explain the bells. This is from the office of the mayor of the City of Burnaby. It's a proclamation regarding Music Monday. Whereas the Burnaby Music Teachers Association, an organization of approximately 80 teachers from Burnaby School District, who advocate for our students and their profession, ensuring that music education in Burnaby is taught by qualified music educators, many of whom participate in this celebration. And whereas on May the 1st, many Burnaby music teachers will participate in celebrating Music Monday with their students and school communities. Whereas music matters. Music programs create vital communities. Learning music leads to success in life. Our young people deserve the benefits from learning, creating and making music. Canada's heritage and cultural future is in our classrooms. And whereas Music Monday often begins with students, teachers and their surrounding community, Music Monday also includes community groups, politicians, professional organizations, music industry, ensembles and artists. All Burnaby residents can participate in this important day. Now, therefore, Derek R. Corrigan, mayor of Burnaby, does hereby proclaim Monday, May the 1st, 2017, as Music Monday in the City of Burnaby.
Thank you, Counselor Valco. Counselor Calendino.
Thank you, your worship. And this is a proclamation on Neighborhood House Week. Whereas neighborhood houses in Burnaby open their doors to help create a safe and inviting place where people from all backgrounds and walks of life are welcomed and included. And whereas neighborhood houses help to create vibrant neighborhoods by providing innovative programs that engage people to live healthy, full lives. And whereas the two neighborhood houses, nine daycare centers and one community hall in Burnaby offer a range of services and supports to strengthen our communities, including childcare, newcomer support, youth leadership, adult literacy, supports for seniors and elders, community meals, cultural events, volunteer opportunities and so much more. They help improve the quality of life and prevent social problems by making our communities stronger, more socially aware and more participative. And whereas neighbors grow neighborhoods. And the efforts of outstanding neighbors should be celebrated throughout the community and will be recognized at the Good Neighbors Awards Ceremony held in Vancouver on May 11, 2017, at the Lower Mainland Good Neighbors Awards. And whereas the City of Burnaby is committed to supporting an engaged, inclusive and socially just municipality where all citizens and visitors participate. And whereas neighborhood houses are an important part of the social and cultural fabric of this city and throughout the world. Now, therefore, Derek Corrigan, mayor of Burnaby, does hereby proclaim May 7th to 13th, 2017, as Neighborhood House Week in the City of Burnaby.
Thank you, Counselor Calendino. And I'm going to come down and make a presentation to Burnaby Neighborhood House in recognition of this week, Neighborhood House Week. This is a framed copy of our proclamation, and I see Antonia Beck is here. Antonia? All right, only 11 more proclamations to go. Actually, this is the final one. And this is from the office of the mayor of the City of Burnaby, proclamation, Suchi Day. Whereas the Buddhist Compassion Relief Suchi Foundation originated in Taiwan and is one of the most active charitable organizations in the world, devoting itself to assist people in need worldwide in the areas of charity, medicine, education, environmental protection and humanistic. And whereas the Suchi Foundation Canada, founded in Canada in 1992, adhering to the teaching of Master Ching Yen, has dedicated itself to spread love and compassion in Canada, British Columbia, and in particular, the City of Burnaby, where Suchi members have been serving seniors' homes, food banks and Salvation Army continuously for more than a decade, funding local hospitals with medical facilities, providing street cleaning, waste reduction and recycling services, sponsoring breakfast programs in seven schools for underprivileged students, as well as comfort kit and winter relief programs for the homeless throughout the year. And whereas Suchi Foundation Canada members have exemplified their devotion, generosity, volunteerism and their efforts have reflected the compassionate nature of Buddhism and their kindness to humanity and providing relief of pain and suffering of people in need. And whereas in celebration of the 25th anniversary of Suchi Foundation Canada and its special occasion of Buddha's birthday and Mother's Day, now, therefore, I, Derek Corrigan, mayor of Burnaby, do hereby proclaim the day of May the 14th, 2017, as Suchi Day in the City of Burnaby. Thank you, and that concludes the proclamations for today. Now, we're moving on to our next item of business. And we have tonight with us a performance by the Soundwave Handbell Choir, which is directed by Janet Nordstrand. The Soundwave Handbell Choir is comprised of students in grades 7 to 10 from three Burnaby High Schools, Burnaby North, Burnaby South and Moskewa, and three Burnaby Elementary Schools, Inman, Chaffey Burke and Stony Creek. We have a total of 14 students from these six different schools, of which one special permission student from Fleetwood Park Secondary in Surrey, whose family has moved but still wanted to play, are performing for us tonight. So far, they have performed in West Vancouver, Abbotsford, Richmond and Burnaby. And they had the honor of performing at the opening ceremonies for the International Handbell Symposium in July 2016. So what a perfect opportunity to hear some of our young students on Music Monday. So without further ado, Ms. Nordstrand, please, if you would lead your Soundwave Handbell Choir. Is that the end? Or you get everything packed up, and I know you're in a hurry. I wanted to come down and give you a copy of our proclamations. Come on in out here. Come to the middle. Come on in here with me, all of you. This is a framed copy of the proclamation we did for Music Monday. Come on in here with me, Ms. Nordstrand. And this is a special gift from the City of Burnaby to recognize you. Now, come on, folks, were they spectacular? I was kind of expecting jingle bells, but you've come a long way. That was tremendous. You were all wonderful, and I wish you could have seen the smiles on their face as they were playing for us. It was absolutely tremendous. They're having a great time. Ms. Nordstrand, great work. And I've learned a lot about being a music teacher from Counselor King. And she is a great admirer of the work that you do, so. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Another big hand. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're just getting ready for the next part of our presentation. That was a pretty good takedown they did. What was that, minute and a half? I'm impressed. Technical malfunction. There we go. There we go. Best laid plans. All right, now, I'm going to come on down because we're going to be presenting our youth citizenship awards. So if I can get down here, I can begin those presentations. All right. Twenty-three years ago, young people in Metro Vancouver asked why there wasn't a day to celebrate youth. They then asked, why not a week rather than a day? Sounds like my kids. This simple idea is what started it all. Youth Week is now an international celebration. Here in British Columbia, Youth Week takes place during the first week of May and is a fun-filled week of interaction and celebration intended to build a strong connection between young people and their communities and to profile youth issues, accomplishments and their diversity. Wherever Youth Week is celebrated, the idea behind it is the same. Young people are important and need to be recognized in a constructive and a positive manner. Their contributions should be acknowledged and celebrated. Youth are often criticized and stereotyped in ways that don't reflect that they are, in fact, creative, motivated and full of excellent ideas that will improve our community and eventually our world. The youth we're honoring here tonight bear out that fact. We have a diverse bunch of young people gathered here today who volunteer in many areas and capacities in their community. Some sit on committees and belong to clubs in their schools, such as student government and model United Nations groups. Others focus their energies on specific causes, such as youth leadership training, environmental initiatives, mental health issues and global challenges. There are representatives here who help seniors learn computer skills through the Tech Easy program. We have youth who are on the Youth Voice Committee and have fundraised to help families in need locally as well as globally. And we also have youth who have helped out with the Salvation Army, Covenant House and B.C. Children's Hospital, an eclectic group indeed. But what is common between all of these nominees is that they care about their city and community and they want to be actively involved and make a difference. If this is what our youth of today are involved with in Burnaby, I am excited to see what our young adults of tomorrow will do. The Burnaby Youth Voice Committee has created citizenship awards to recognize young people in Burnaby who volunteered their time and skills and in doing so have made a very positive difference in our community. I would like to take the time to recognize the following youth who've been nominated for a citizenship award. Now. Oh, we've got that one there. Okay, so we're starting right here?
Yes.
All right. The first youth is not here tonight with us, but I will mention her name, Alicia Raham Tula. Good hands. The next youth is Aliana Lalami. Please, come on up. Congratulations. There you go. Stay up here with me. Oh, you're going to get a picture individually with me. Okay. Stay up here with me. The next student is not here, but I will mention Alyssa Wong. Good hands, Alyssa. Good hands, Alyssa. Amanda Lee. Come on up, Amanda Lee, where are you? You look beautiful tonight, Amanda. Come on up here. There you go, and stay with us. The next youth is Amina Davison. Congratulations, Amina. Come on in here. The next youth is Bijou Umikwanda. How'd I do on that name? Close? You're very generous. Bill Su. Congratulations, Bill, and thank you. There we go. We have Chee Wan Song. Congratulations. And we have David Valera. Congratulations, David. Alright, we have Enrique Perez. Go ahead. Congratulations. And Gunit Puni. Congratulations, Gunit. Oh, wait, one more. We have Nat Chung. Congratulations. Ibriz Assaria. Congratulations. Come in here. Nice job, thank you. Jasper Chan. Congratulations, Jasper. Jennifer Fan. Congratulations, Jennifer. Jessica Ju. Congratulations. Joshua Valera. And Kyle Tidale. Congratulations, Kyle. You're looking good today, he's going after my job. Who looks more mare-like? I have Logan Khan. Congratulations, Logan. Not with us, Mahi Hussain. And Maya Kazuta. Hi, Maya. Oh, what a handshake. Ooh, that hurt! Sorry. It's okay, I'll live. Mandy Kwan. See you, Mandy, come on in here. There we go. Not with us tonight is Mernan Anne Orogo. Big hand for Mernan Anne. And next I have Michael Young. Thank you for having a name that's so easy to pronounce. And Nicole Hu. Oh, congratulations. And Ramin Najjar. Congratulations, Ramin. Here we go. Alright, and not with us is Wei Deng. Big hand for Wei Deng. Angelina G. Oh, these are the top five of the Youth Week? Oh, well, very good, Angelina. I almost missed that you were in the top five. Okay, you get to stand closer. Oh, okay. And I have Dante Wong. Dante! There you go, Dante. And also in the top five, Phyllis Charing. Oh, nice smile. Come on in. And I have Samir Ismael. Congratulations, Samir. And last but not least, I have Sonia Khan. Sonia! Congratulations, Sonia. Okay. Yeah. Now, the last five youth that I dealt with are the five youths who have been selected as the winners of this year's Citizenship Awards, and they'll be presented with a $100 bursary. These youth have gone over and above to make a difference in Burnaby and beyond while maintaining personal, academic, and extracurricular involvement. So another big recognition for our top five who are Angelina G., Dante Wong, Phyllis Charing, Samir Ismael, and Sonia Khan. Excellent job! And this year's Burnaby Youth Week Logo Contest winner is Giorgia Di Giovanni. She was an international student at Burnaby South Secondary School who has now returned to Italy. It's clear councillor Calendino that Italy remains the home of design. That's wonderful. Okay, now, we're gonna get a picture together, so everyone come on in here with me. Come on. The tall ones in the back, you know the rules. That's right. Come on in here. Alright. You can come in closer to me, I haven't bit students for weeks. There we go. There you go. Alright, have a seat, everybody. Now, I know that with all these young people here, that many of them are going to have to leave in just a moment. I'm sure they've got other obligations, homework certainly at this time of year, exams coming up. But I just wanted to say, first of all, how proud I am, how proud council is of the great work that you've been doing as volunteers to make our community better. You know, earlier on in the comments that I made, I talked about the fact that people often stereotype youth and come to conclusions about youth that are entirely wrong. And what we need to do is to be able to show them the examples of the very fine young people in our community who do so much. Not only do they keep up their grades, participate in sports, be involved in music, but they find time to get out and become a part of their community. And these young people aren't... They are the best examples we can find, but they're not exceptional. There are so many youth who are committed and doing things all over our community on a regular basis, and all of us need to remember that. I also want to say that oftentimes, when you find really good young people like this, it's because they have great parents. People who work hard to make them complete human beings, to ensure that they not only are doing their best at school and they're participating in things for themselves, but they're also giving back. Those kind of values start in the home. And I want to congratulate all the parents who must be very, very proud tonight. In fact, I saw the buttons bursting out there as people saw their child coming up to receive the recognition that they so deserve. And whether you're an aunt, an uncle, a grandparent, a mother, a father, a brother, or sister, this is a time when you really get to pat yourself on the back for being part of the life of a young person and making a real difference. You know, the base that you give them is what's going to allow them to become the great adults of tomorrow who are going to lead. I looked out there into some of their eyes, some of those bright young eyes, and I know that we are gonna find creative solutions for the problems we face in society through those young people who are going to be able to take on those challenges. So tonight, while we recognise your accomplishments as you're very young, I know that we are right at the beginning of a lifetime of accomplishments for these young people. So, join me, all of you young people. Join me in giving a big hand to the families behind you who help you to be able to accomplish everything that you accomplish, because I know you care deeply about the values that your family has given you, and you practise those values each and every day in your own life. So a big hand for all those parents who've made a better start. Okay, now, I want you to go to school for a little while longer than I want you to go out and fix the world. Alright? So, we're gonna go into a delegation in just a moment, and you're welcome to stay for the delegation and the rest of the meeting. But if some of you now getting close to 8 o'clock have to get home and do some homework, this might be the right time for you to just slip out the door quietly and make sure you can get to your tasks at hand. Alright, a motion to hear the delegation. All those in favour, opposed, carried. And the delegation is Ms. Elsie Dean and Mr. Andrew Gage from West Coast Environmental Law. Ms. Dean and Mr. Gage, if you'd come forward, please. And Elsie, of course, everyone will remember, is a Citizen of the Year in the city of Burnaby.
Hello, my name is Elsie Dean. I live at 5285 Empire Drive in Burnaby. And I'm very happy to be here and very proud to represent the Burnaby residents opposing Kinder Morgan Pipeline. All of us in Broke and our thousand supporters are very happy to be here to introduce the West Coast Environmental Law and Andrew Gage in presenting to you their plan, Climate Law in Our Hands, an initiative. And so, without further ado and wasting any time, we'll let Andrew take over. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dean, and Andrew, welcome.
Thank you, Elsie, and thank you, Mayor and council. It's a privilege to be presenting to you, in general, but also because of your leadership on the Kinder Morgan Pipeline expansion issue, as well as to be presenting after the awards to the youth and the bell ringing, because what I'm talking about, of course, does relate to youth and to the future of this community and of the planet generally. We're here to talk to you about something that hopefully helps fight climate change and also saves taxpayers some money as well. So I'm hoping it's a win-win from that point of view. We tend to think of climate change as a far-off thing, maybe affecting polar bears and Pacific islanders, but the reality is that it's here and now for our communities. Rising sea levels is a big one here in the Lower Mainland. The province of B.C. estimates that lower mainland municipalities will need to spend about $9.5 billion between now and 2100 to deal with rising sea levels. And Burnaby's share is about $238 million between now and 2100. And those are costs that are... We need to start incurring now to deal with the reality of the coming change in sea level. But it's not just sea level. Every community across British Columbia is experiencing a new normal and new impacts, whether it be wildfires, whether it be 100-year storm events that are coming every 20 years, whether it be droughts, unprecedented droughts, or other problems associated with climate change. And that means that the infrastructure you're building now needs to withstand that new normal, not just today, but also in the coming 30, 50, or more years. And that costs money. And it's a cost that every community around the world is increasingly experiencing. So, right now, the assumption is that those costs will be borne by taxpayers. That our communities will come forward and build those adaptation measures and rebuild our communities if they don't work. And, you know, the question has to be, where is that money going to come from? Can we really afford, as communities, to deal with these ever-rising... Can, can we really afford, uh, as communities, to deal with these ever-rising, uh, costs of climate change? We need a new conversation. We need a conversation about cradle-to-grave responsibility and about, uh, the puller pays principle and the fact that there are 90 entities that according to, um, some groundbreaking work by a guy named Richard Heady in the States, um, are responsible for almost, through their operations and through their, um, the emissions from their products, are responsible for almost two-thirds of greenhouse gas emissions globally. Um, just 20 fossil fuel companies are responsible for almost 30% of the green, human-caused greenhouse gases in the atmosphere today. And of course, we're not saying that they're only responsible, we know we all play a role in this society, um, in this fossil fuel economy, but they are responsible in very major ways, and in to date, there's not been a conversation about their role in the costs that our communities are increasingly suffering from climate change. Uh, and we also haven't had the conversation about how those same industries have known for many, many years that their, uh, that their products would cause these impacts. Exxon scientists were first, uh, publishing about climate change in 1957. Um, they, they took out patents that, uh, are intended to, you know, were intended, uh, patents on energy efficiency, on mitigation and adaptation measures, uh, which they then sat on or which they developed to protect their own, uh, operations. And we haven't, yeah, it, there, there, there's a question of responsibility there, and as I say, we're not saying it's just them, but it's clearly a conversation that, that they do not want to see happen. On January 25th, uh, Broke and West Coast Environmental Law and more than 50 other B.C.-based groups wrote to all of B.C.'s local governments, asking our municipalities to take action to hold these companies accountable for those costs. Um, and I'm here to, to encourage you to, to consider some of those, the specific, um, recommendations in that letter. Specifically, the first step is just taking the step to publicly ask them about their fair share. As I say, this is a conversation that they do not want to see happen, and the act of publicly saying, here's how climate change is affecting our community, here's why, uh, you know, we are looking to you to pay your fair share of those costs, that's a revolutionary act or an important act, it's a, it's a, it's a way of getting this conversation on the board. Our website, uh, ClimateLawInOurHands.org, has, um, a spreadsheet of all of the addresses and, uh, the, the percentage shares as, uh, estimated by Richard Heady, uh, for each of the, the top 20 companies, or, or a longer list if you decided to go broader. Um, and, uh, until, until they're asked, until this conversation's out there, they, they don't need to talk to their shareholders, they don't need to confront the reality that their products are, cannot be fully reserved, uh, burnt. Um, the, you know, Exxon and Shell are still telling their shareholders, we can continue taking our reserves out of the ground until someone makes us stop, and there's no consequences for you as investors. That's, that's got to, you know, that's a conversation we need to have, is, is how can we continue down this path? And the letter also asks you to consider the possibility of a class action, local, uh, Ms., sorry, class action by all of B.C.'s local governments. Um, so there is some legal backing to the claim, but at this stage, we're just asking you to consider sending the letters. And, uh, you know, the, the conversation about whether there are, for next steps can, can wait till we've seen what the companies say in response. But there is this rising tide of, of climate costs, and in my respectful submission, it would be irresponsible of you, knowing that these costs are coming down the pipe, knowing that you have to, to respond to them, to, uh, just assume that those will be borne by the taxpayer and not have a conversation about whether or not the fossil fuel companies that have played a major role in causing those impacts have a role to play. But it's, in addition to being fiscally responsible, it's also vital in terms of fighting climate change, because we have a, a huge job ahead of us to, to transition an economy that's been built on fossil fuels to a renewable energy be economy. And as long as there's, uh, an industry out there that's making hundreds of billions of dollars by selling a product that causes climate change and not paying a cent for those costs, it's going to be very difficult to transition from fossil fuels. They will have every incentive to continue to undermine progress, and renewable energy and energy, you know, the energy, uh, infrastructure of the future is going to have trouble competing against an industry that won't clean up its own mess. So, as long as we, as long as these companies believe that they do not have to pay the consequences for their actions, they have every incentive to continue down the path to, towards a future that we do not want to see happening, a, a, a future where we have dramatic and ongoing rises in temperature devastating our communities, but the moment they and their investors know the communities are talking about the fact that this industry bears a moral and legal duty to pay its fair share for the climate impacts we are increasingly suffering, is the moment that they have an incentive to move towards this, uh, a renewable and a sustainable economy, uh, and they can have an incentive to start working with us instead of standing in the way of climate action. So, um, yeah, I mean, we've, we've, I want to really emphasize that, that it's never been legal to knowingly sell a product that destroys communities and, and harms people. Um, it's, uh, you know, we're not, we're not looking to, by, by asking you to do this, we're not looking to government to pass some new law or, uh, to international negotiations which haven't gone anywhere, we're saying Canadian law and, uh, has long recognized that if you're selling a product that you know harms people, there are consequences. This is asking the industry to take responsibility for its product. So, by looking to our local impacts and demanding global accountability, we can have an impact that goes way beyond our borders, the borders of this municipality, or indeed beyond Canada's borders, by insisting that these companies take responsibility for their global emissions. Uh, and that gives us a cloud that really, I think is one of the most important things that a local government could do, um, to, to fight climate change, by really challenging the profit motive of the fossil fuel industry that has brought us to where we are today. Um, so, without anything further, I'd be happy to take any questions. Uh, at this point, I'm not necessarily expecting you to do anything with us today, but we'll certainly be in touch, um, to see if you have questions or want to discuss this further individually. Anything West Coast Environmental Law or the groups we're working with can do to, to help you, uh, consider whether to send this type of letter or take further action, we'd love to, uh, be able to offer. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate you taking the time to come and tell us about this. As you, uh, know, we've bitten off a lot in regard to fighting Kinder Morgan and, uh, and the idea of the Trans Mountain Pipeline, and it has fully occupied us in the direct impact of the fossil fuel industry on our city. And, uh, we have been placing a lot of resources into fighting a battle that really shouldn't have to be fought. Uh, it's one of those situations in which we are one of the victims of the desire of the fossil fuel industry, not only to move product into our marketplace here in North America, but to export, um, bitumen from the tar sands to other countries, the U.S. and China particularly. So it's not even for our own use or use within our own country, or fossil fuels that are being refined here under Canadian standards, it's simply crude product being shipped offshore through, through Burnaby. And, uh, recently, we have been out communicating to our community about the real impact of the route that goes through our city, and last week, we had a presentation about exactly what was going to happen now that they had reached the final stages of their, their route planning, and that is going to be very significant. I think Broke is, uh, well, apoplectic over the impact this is going to have, and, uh, and I think there are a lot of people in the community who are still in shock as to what might happen as a result of the pipeline going through Burnaby. I, um, I know that, and I should inform you, that Chevron has recently sold their refinery here in, in Burnaby, and a company named Parkland is now, uh, taken over, or is in the process of taking over ownership of their facility and their stations. So, if we decide to write a letter, it's to be directed to a new company here in Burnaby at least, but I'm sure that we could write letters to Chevron for the past damage that they've done in regard to fossil fuels. I agree with you that, um, there has never been, uh, an accountability for that impact at all, and in fact, during the discussions with the National Energy Board, they refuse to even consider climate change as being one of the elements that we, that we were, that was available for discussion in the, in the hearings. So, we were, this issue was not even allowed to be presented as one of the things we should consider in regard to the export of bitumen. So, it's been a very frustrating situation for us, and I, I know it's been a frustrating situation for Elsie and many of our residents who've been fighting through Broke to, uh, to try to stop this project from going ahead. And I know that West Coast Environmental Law has been very active in, in assisting us, the other cities, the First Nations, the not-for-profits that are, are still in this pitch battle. So, you know, I, while I, I'm glad you're raising the argument to another level and engaging a much broader audience of municipalities in that regard, I, uh, I can tell you, we're pretty focused on the fight we've got right now. Good news, though, Federation of Canadian Municipalities has now stepped on board to support us in virtually all of the changes we recommended to the National Energy Board to create a more legitimate process at least for considering the, uh, the implementation of pipelines. So, you know, we've gained the support of Metro Vancouver through hard work over a long period of time, we have gained the support now of the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, so there are more cities across Canada, many of them not directly impacted by the oil industry, who are beginning to understand the issue in a much more complete way and are very supportive of a, a much more honest, much more transparent process for the consideration of any of these issues. So, with that, I will, um, Councilor Dollywall, you wanted to make a comment or ask a question?
Thank you, Your Worship, uh, just, uh, just wanted to make a comment. Uh, first of all, thank you very much, Ms. Dean and Mr. Gage, for coming and making this presentation, and as, uh, as our mayor said, this, uh, this helps in raising awareness, this from city to city, town to town. Obviously, there's already a fair amount of concern on part of this council, we have already been fighting, to some extent, to our, uh, ability to, to stop the, the expansion of fossil fuels, not only here, but across the world. But, eh, as a city, we are doing as much as we can in, in terms of, for a long time, in terms of very aware about what the, but how we should be reacting to global warming and how we should be acting to things, whether we have acquired more parks, uh, changed our facilities to be more, uh, consumption, uh, which they're aware of, of the, how we use energy, all those things that we were leading has been with the intention to really making sure that this, that we, this, everything we do is sustainably, uh, going to keep us going for the next, um, for our future generations. But this is an issue which I think both of the other orders, the, both of the other orders of government really need to take very seriously as well as local governments. You said, you know, a conversation need to happen, but I think a change of government need to happen, which is more really tuned in to, to the issues of, of fossil fuels and continuing use of these fuels. Uh, we've got to start investing in, 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 in economy, which is a more of, of sustainable economy, and that's very important to, so, what you ask for isn't something really new, there's already, i- is a principle of, uh, extended producer responsibility, which is basically that, not you have to look after your product for the lifecycle of it, also upstream, downstream, possible, what the causes are. So, so this isn't something that we are coming, that you are saying that this is very unusual, it isn't. It's something that we should build on what we already know, that any producer producing, selling, marketing any products that are going to harm people or harm environment, they need to be responsible for it, be doing to some extent to the smaller producers, it's time now to really move towards the larger producers of the environment, polluted, which is the, the environment. So, uh, as you said, this is probably a, a cause that we all have to work towards, and I just wanted to thank you for being here. From the city's perspective, yes, we are very aware of it, as, as Worship has said, um, we're working not only locally, we're working with the U.B.C.M., F.C.M. to make sure that all local governments have, and put pressure on, on the other two orders of government to start investing in, in sustainable energies, uh, alternative energy than just using fuels. So, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. And the, um, I do want to mention, uh, in that context, uh, I find it quite hypocritical that, uh, the premiers of both Alberta and of Saskatchewan are advocating very strongly for the exploitation of the oil resources in their own provinces, while at the same time, they're applying for federal dollars to clean up the mess of oil wells that have been used to exploit their province on the easily obtainable oil and were simply left to rot in the ground for the next several hundred years. So you've got provinces that are saying, let's get at the next oil, and by the way, can the federal government please give us some money to fund removing the equipment that was left by the previous oil exploiters in our province? So, they didn't even anticipate, while they were taking that oil out of the ground, that someone needed to clean up the oil wells they were using when they finally closed. So those companies, those numbered companies that went in and, and, and took the oil out of the ground, walked away without any consequences, and now the expectation is that the taxpayer will clean it up. And the premiers have no trouble in asking the federal government to fund that. Makes no sense whatsoever. At least those two premiers should be looking to their own oil industries to clean up the mess that was left by their predecessors, because in most cases, they were the beneficiaries of those companies. So, it's very frustrating for those of us who are trying to deal with this as an ongoing issue. And the extended producer liability argument, I think, is an excellent one. We do ask all kinds of companies to pay to recycle batteries, because there is a real cost to using batteries in our society, but we seem, for some, for some reason, with the oil industry, to think they can act with impunity.
Council, uh, where it was actually, there was enough enthusiasm that they actually put it right to a vote, and it was, uh, a two, it was very, a number of people were in, are on leave and/or were not present, so it was a two-two, uh, split and, and was defeated on, um, uh, by a tie. Uh, but there was obviously some interest there, there, um, and we've, um, got a number
Some concept that you're advocating, really interesting, but I've had a few years' experience now of trying to gather, herd all the cats together in, in a room and get, get cities all going in the same direction on an issue, and, um, if you have to go and speak at every municipality around the region and things, I think, I think that's an awful lot of work, and, and I might be able, uh, to have some advice from you offline. I see you have your email address here about some other approaches that you might want to take that may sort of get some momentum behind this and, and be able. to take that may sort of get some momentum behind this and be able.
Committee, so, because I want to take a look at the legal position, and I can't go in camera in regard to that. So with that, is there a motion to refer to Financial Management Committee?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, carried. I don't know what, you know, when we sit down and talk to our lawyers and we look at it, what, you know, I'm not a big one, I'm a lawyer too, or I was a lawyer. I'm a repenting lawyer now. I, but I, I'm always worried about sending off demand letters when I don't have an action to follow. Problem for us is to, is to find a route where we don't end up frustrated by the courts and spending a lot of valuable resources chasing an argument that won't be successful. So I'm going to have a long, hard look at that element of it, and I'd appreciate any other advice. You know, I'm. Protection agencies being decimated under the Trump government in the United States, and it was decimated here by the conservative government previously, our environmental departments. So I'm worried about us having the credible resources to be able to advance these arguments effectively and to, and to make our case. That's really where the problem lies. But the principles, I really like, and I think, you know, are, they should be part of the cost of fuel, to be able to deal with the realities of all of the impacts. All right, a motion to resolve into a committee of the whole to consider reports. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Audit Committee, Consulor Johnson, please.
On behalf of the committee, I would move that council received the City of Burnaby 2016 Annual Municipal Report, and the audit consolidated financial statements for the year ended 2016 December 31st.
Seconded motion.
Your Worship, the report that's before us indicates the results of the city's annual audit. We received a clean or unqualified audit report, thanks to the wonderful work by our staff and in both the finance and other departments in the building. The report also before us indicates that we do have a surplus for the year, and this
So it comes in as an accumulated surplus. I don't want anybody out there in the public or in the press to be confused by that. The surpluses that are actually available for expenditure for carrying forward are all surpluses that are departmental surpluses, gains that we made in managing our system over the course of the year. The other monies are reserves that will go into funds that are already previously designated for projects, like the kinds of amenities we've committed to. So I want to be clear about that.
Exactly. It's going to be used to build social housing or rec centers in the town centers and such. You're right.
Exactly. So that's one of the issues that some people get confused about and think that that's part of a surplus and that they were overtasked.
Six, 2017, at the Shabolt Center for the Arts.
Question. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And then, 2017 L 004, Nikkei National Museum and Cultural Center, I would move that a festival's Burnaby Grant large-scale event in the amount of $11,000 be awarded to the Nikkei National Museum and Cultural Center for the Nikkei Place Matsuri Family Festival 2017 to be held on September 2nd and 3rd, 2017, at the Nikkei Place.
Moving seconded. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And 17 L 005, Heights Merchants Association BIA, that a festival grant large-scale event in the amount of $8,000 be awarded to the Heights Merchants Association BIA for hats off day 20.
The replacement of the parks and rec registration system, known as the class system, which is what the public use for arranging for different classes and booking events on, in different rec centers. There is some work for some Hanson upgrades, which is our engineering software, some project portfolio management tools, some IT management systems, and some depart, some basic departmental applications and upgrades. These are all as per the budget that council approved.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Thank you to the Financial Management Committee. All right, moving on to the city manager's report, item one. This is a text amendment, the addition of a permitted use to the M4 special.
The difference between a one-bedroom suite and a junior one-bedroom suite?
Three-year, Worship. It would relate to the size of it, so I need to go into the zoning bylaw. There'll be a size for a standard one-bedroom and a size for a one-bedroom that's slightly smaller.
Actually, there isn't any, like, just one bedrooms. There's one bedroom and den and junior. Could you send me the details about the sites?
I will.
Thank you very much.
Good to have that before the public hearing. All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item three. This is two high-rise apartment towers in the Brentwood Town Center Plan, and this again is authorization to forward to a public hearing on May the 30th.
Which is very progressive, I think, and maybe we should encourage other developers to increase their EVO cups, seeing that, you know, we want the, moving away from consumption of fossil fuel and move into more green energy, and they're coming. The electric vehicle is coming, and I think maybe we should encourage developers to be a little more generous, because most of them put a maximum 10% of hookups for EVs in their developments, and 20 years from now, most automobiles, I think, will be electric vehicles.
I, we've been talking about this issue, Consulor Calendino, at the Climate Action Committee and at Metro Vancouver, and one of the things that I think is important is that we require the infrastructure to be able to support a system going in sometime in the future without necessarily putting in all of the stations at all of the available parking spaces. One of the